Okay.
Chair Bliss, you are recording now.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you. Thank you as well, Naruph and Casey from Townsend. I'm going to call the meeting. I don't know if it's officially called to order without a quorum, but I will officially initiate the meeting of the Legislation Committee for the Lafayette City of Council. We will get started, and then if Council Member Burke is able to join, we'll conduct business. If not, I think we can have, go through the agenda and sort of talk generally without taking action as to how we might, what we might, you know, plan to offer backup to council when this comes back to them. Before we start, I think I can ask this of Naruph and also Casey. Is our goal to, I'm being mindful here of, you know, the council schedule and also kind of the space that we're in and wanting to hit the ground running with an, you know, the Legislature obviously comes back for a week in December. I'm just being mindful of like the electoral calendar. And so just Naruph, in terms of when you would want to have a sort of legislative prep discussion for council, what are your thoughts on timing for that?
Can you hear me? My internet says it's unstable. Okay. The goal was to take a report from the LEC committee to the council at its next meeting in October or in early November, because if there are any amendments that the council wants to make to the legislative agenda, we need to do that now.
Right.
And if there are things that we need to put in place to get ready for next year, we should start doing those.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that. So I think, so I'll, you know, I know that Naruph, you and your team are, do a masterful job of managing the agenda along with the mayor, of course, and the vice mayor. So I'll kind of look to you in terms of the timing on that. I think we can move as a council, I think we can move as quickly as we need to in order to be ready for December. I think the only thing contextually that I have to say may factor into how we think about our agenda is, you know, I've said before at council and on this committee that, you know, the, now as much as ever, the federal context is so, and we're seeing this right now with the state budget, of course, right? Where the lack of a New Deal, sorry, lack of a lowercase n, lowercase d, New Deal coming out of the federal government puts the state budget now in a very different situation than might have been, right? So I think we may want to move what we can, but then maybe between Election Day and the first week in December, when the legislature comes back, think about whether anything that might transpire at the federal level might cause us to make any final tweaks to the legislative agenda. Does that, does that make sense? I'm looking at Naruph and Casey. Casey, does that seem to be viable?
Yeah, I mean, from a, from a state legislative process, while they come back for a day in December, really, it's January and February, new bills are being introduced. So obviously, you know, if we can have a, you know, updated legislative platform in place when they return kind of in earnest, that's great. If not, I mean, we have an existing platform, so it's not like there'd be a void where we wouldn't have direction as to where to go, so.
Great. So I'd love to have, yeah, I think the goal would be to have updates, and then I think we can do the bulk of that well in advance of the first week in December. And I'm just signaling that like, since none of us have, I think there's a lot of unknown and uncertainty about what could transpire on November 3rd and thereafter. And I just think I want to make sure that there was any final changes the council wants to make in light of. So basically, we have that month in between November 3rd and December 7th. So, but getting as much work as done, done as possible on the agenda prior to that, if that makes sense from an agenda standpoint and what's on the, what's on the docket for council between now and then, I think that would be, but I guess it's really only one meeting between now and Election Day, right, of the council? Okay, well, let's move ahead. And Naruph, we can, we can talk, you know, between now and when we have to finalize the agenda for the, I think it's the 26th is our next council meeting about what we want to do. So with, with input from Casey, of course. Okay. So then, let's see. Let's move then into, I don't see any members of the public, so we can move past public comment. I was not on the agenda. And then move into our legislative recap. To Casey.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate being here. Boy, where to start? As, as we've talked about this year, I mean, it's a very, very different year from a, from a state legislative perspective, which, which kind of carried through to the end of session. Ultimately, this year, I think I've mentioned it to you guys before. I think what this year is going to be remembered for is what didn't happen. Obviously, the impacts from COVID, you know, both at the beginning of session as well as over summer recess really kind of ate into the legislative schedule and calendar. Ultimately, the legislature sent 428 bills down to Governor Newsom for his consideration this year. He signed 372 bills into law and vetoed 56. That 13% veto rate is, it's pretty consistent with, I think last year, looking at the numbers that I have, he had a 16%, 16 and a half percent veto rate. Brown between 2011 and 2018 fluctuated between, you know, 10.7% and 16 and a half percent. So while the volume was lower, the, the rate of signing and vetoing bills remained consistent. The volume, though, as I mentioned, as we've talked about all year, is low. Contextually, just to kind of put that in perspective, last year, the governor considered just over 1,000 bills, 1,042. So we're talking about, you know, 60% fewer bills. Going back, you know, the data I have goes back to when Reagan was governor and in the mid 60s. This was the lowest number of bills that were, that was sent to any governor in any year. The previous low was under Governor Schwarzenegger when there were, I think, just, just over about 600 and, no, 893 was the previous low. So we're, we're, you know, just, we're less half of the, of the previous low. I mean, so it was just, again, just the volume. I can't really underscore how few bills the legislature acted on this year. And we did kind of see that across all of, all of the areas. Obviously, through this committee and through council, we've really been focused on housing, public safety, wildfires. And those were probably the three of the biggest issues that the legislature considered this year. It just so happened those three also touched, you know, on the city. You know, as we kind of go through, first, I'll kind of briefly mention police reform, public safety. Obviously, that came up kind of in the middle of the year, really precipitated, not that there weren't bills before, but really kind of spurred on by the, by the death of George Floyd. Ultimately, the legislature passed, let's say, some of the, of the bills that were introduced, some of the more, not necessarily controversial, but some of the, some of the broader bills did not end up passing the legislature that would have, you know, those bills that would have set in place statewide, you know, decertification processes, those elements did not pass. We did see a couple of bills, AB 1196, which the city supported, which would prohibit the, the use of the carotid restraint holds and other chokeholds. That measure was passed and signed into law by Governor, by Governor Newsom. Similarly, AB 1506 by Assemblymember McCarty, that was passed and signed into law by the governor. That one may have, it may be kind of considered the flagship public safety bill. It wasn't necessarily what, what the author, everything that he wanted, but, but that bill does require a state prosecutor, which will be the Attorney General unless otherwise designated. Will, the state prosecutor will need to investigate, conduct independent investigations to any police shooting that resolves, that results in the death of an unarmed civilian. And then additionally, that measure does set up a process in 2023 for the, for the Department of Justice to create a unit where local law enforcement can request that, excuse me, the Department of Justice look into other uses of force, use of force policies. So that bill starts to make some good progress. I think that we'll see Assemblymember McCarty try to do additional legislation. As I mentioned, he, he wanted, originally, he had, he had put out this bill to go further. He started, the Assemblymember has been interested in this area for quite a while, predating the death of George Floyd, given some of the issues surrounding Stephon Clark here in Sacramento and some of the other unfortunate incidences that we've had in, in his district. So I do anticipate that will continue. I think a consistent theme that you'll hear from me is that bills that didn't get passed out of the legislature or weren't, or were vetoed by the governor, I fully expect all of those bills to come back. I think that a lot of those authors just probably aren't going to be willing to accept that there either isn't support for their bills or otherwise will, will think that the, the impact from the calendar, you know, may have played a result, you know, play a part in those bills not advancing. So bills like AB 66, which would limit the use of tear gas and rubber bullets for demonstrations, I think you see legislation like that coming back. I think you see decertification and other use of force bills coming back next year. So, you know, as I said, I think that's going to continue to be a topic. To that end, earlier in, in September and about mid-September, Speaker Rendon did announce the formation of a new Select Committee on Police Reform. Really, normally, select committees, I want to say we don't get excited about. I mean, they, they have their purpose. They generally are delving, you know, deeper into issues. Select committees don't author bills, they don't write bills, they don't consider, you know, they don't vote on bills. However, in this area, I think that it really shapes up, could shape up to be a meaningful committee that, that could really provide some input and really kind of delve into some of these issues. Because like I said, I think we're going to see a lot of these bills. That, that Select Committee is going to be chaired by Assemblymember Mike Gibson out of, out of Southern California. Mr. Gibson was, was the author of AB 1196. More locally, Ms. Bauer-Kahan has been appointed to that committee. So the city's Assemblymember will have kind of a front row seat for that. I think that that's going to be great. In as much as we're talking about regional efforts around public safety and as much as you're having some local efforts there to really have, you know, Ms. Bauer-Kahan have, have access to some of these Select Committee resources in this platform, I think will be, will be positive. You know, the other members, you know, on that Select Committee, Mr. Vont, Assemblymember Cunningham out of the Central Coast, Tom Lackey, you get a couple of Republicans with, with courtroom experience and, you know, law enforcement experience. So I think you get a really good, a really good flavor, a really good mix of members that are on this committee. So hopefully, they'll, they'll have a good chance to create some products coming out of that committee or at least, you know, provide some, some in-depth consideration of some of these policies that are going to be considered next year. Moving forward, as, as, as we've talked about all year, housing, you know, housing production, affordable housing, homelessness started, seems like a million years ago, but we started out the year with SB 50, you know, and kind of all the conversation around that in January. And then after the failure of that bill, you know, the Senate was going to create a big housing production legislation. COVID deal read that. Ultimately, they came up with a, about a 15, you know, about a dozen bill package that they advanced. The Assembly put together a bill package in the middle of the year. Ultimately, a lot of those bills fell by the wayside at the end of session between the appropriations process and then just kind of the, as we've talked about, the political acrimony that was happening at the end of session ultimately shelved a lot of those bills. Of the bills that did go down, not, not surprisingly, the governor had some favorable consideration on most of the bills. He did sign AB 725 into law. That's going to require jurisdictions to, to have 25% of their mod and above mod housing zoned in areas that can support 4 to 100 units, so kind of that medium density. So that, that bill is in place. Similarly, AB 2345, which makes some modifications to density bonus law, particularly as we get into moderate housing. That measure was signed into law. So the city had, had positions on both of those. And unfortunately, he signed those despite the city's opposition and additional opposition. One bill worth mentioning, I don't know that I put it in the report, but I did want to mention it, Assembly Bill 2095, 209565 by Assemblymember Burke. That, that measure would have essentially created a state policy that all Californians have a right to affordable housing. And the governor vetoed that measure, which I think caught some off guard. The governor's, particularly given the focus that the governor's put on, on addressing homelessness and creating affordable housing and additional housing units. Obviously, they, the governor ultimately cited the potential cost to the state. I mean, if you, if you kind of take that out to its kind of most extreme end, I think Department of Finance had pegged that at about a $10 billion a year price tag for the state. But again, it was interesting. The legislature has passed some of their bills. There was a bill several years ago regarding rights to clean drinking water, which was signed into law by Governor Brown. So that one was a little interesting. I thought that, again, while it wouldn't necessarily have a day-to-day impact, I do think it was an interesting message to send that at least this administration, there are some, some limits what they're willing to consider in housing legislation. And then I think, you know, kind of lastly, I did want to touch on just the area of wildfires, as you guys are keenly aware, although it looks like you guys are maybe going to avoid this PSPS event, which is positive. Wildfires continues to be a huge issue. You know, unfortunately, we've seen the incidences up and down the state again this year. There were a handful of bills signed by the governor. AB 3074 by Assemblymember Friedman, you know, creates some additional enhancements for defensible, defensible space around homes. You know, a couple of other, you know, minor items on kind of ember-resistant zones. The governor did veto SB 182, which is a measure by Senator Jackson that the city supported, which would have kind of brought some of that wildfire into zoning issues and, and development, you know, kind of development process. Ultimately, the governor, in his veto message, cited kind of a number of, of different elements, but, you know, duplication of some existing laws. He felt that there were some loopholes that the, the bill created that would allow people not to comply with housing, you know, various housing requirements. And then he also cited, you know, consequences that could cause sprawl. So again, there are a number of issues. You know, Senator Jackson, unfortunately, she's going to be termed out, so I don't know what the fate of, of that policy will be. There have been others, Senator Henry Stern in Southern California, that have, that have taken similar positions. It seems like a lot of those bills have been kind of driven from that Central Coast, you know, kind of Northern LA County into Ventura County. You know, Assemblymember, presumably, the new senator is, is current Assemblymember Monique Lamone. Her area, her district has been impacted by these wildfires as well. So we may continue to see some legislation. I think that depending upon what we see, what some of the outcomes are from the remainder of this fire season, what some of these potential causes are that they're looking into these wildfires, you know, we may see us another round of legislation kind of targeting PG&E. There were definitely efforts earlier in the year on some additional hardening measures of the grid, whether that's undergrounding or other hardening efforts. The state budget obviously put a limit on, on the resources the state had to put towards those activities, but I think that's going to continue to be a conversation. Forced management will, will continue to be a conversation, though obviously, we need some, some federal assistance and some federal partners on, on to help, to really help get that under control. But again, I, I think that we've seen the governor, whether it's through legislation or through executive orders, really kind of reinforce, you know, the threat to wildfires from climate change. You know, and, and he's shown that he's willing to kind of take some big actions to try to, you know, curtail as much as possible climate change and make sure that the state does its part. So I assume that we'll continue to see legislation along, along those lines going into next year. So then, just to kind of briefly wrap up within the, the report that I provided to you, I did provide the outcome of the, of the measures that the city took positions on or sent to the governor. There were one request for veto on AB 725. Unfortunately, that measure was signed. AB 1196 was signed into law, which the city supported. AB 2054, which the city supported, was vetoed. However, the governor did, I think, leave a window open for that to be considered through next year's budget process. There has been an ongoing, probably more inside baseball than you, than you may want, so I'll keep it brief, but there has been an ongoing conversation on these types of grant programs, whether they best belong in someplace like CalOES, which is where this bill would have put that grant program, or they belong in CDCR, under the Corrections umbrella? Do they belong under the Health and Human Services umbrella? So, so part of it is just kind of getting this into the correct State Department that the, that the administration feels comfortable with. And then the last bill, again, which the city supported, was SB 182, which was vetoed, as I just mentioned earlier. And then just kind of rounded out the, the remainder of the staff report with some other items that, that would impact the city's final disposition on those bills. Maybe just one or two that I'll highlight, because I can't imagine I've gone this far and not mentioned COVID, so I should do that. I think a couple of the bigger bills, as we mentioned in our last meeting at the end of August, AB 3088 was signed into law. That's the one that provides some tenant protections. So to try to limit the evictions of renters that are impacted due to COVID, that measure was signed into law. The primary provisions of that bill expire in February, so we will definitely be having this conversation again when, as soon as the legislature returns. SB 1159 is one that I want to make sure to mention. It's by Senator Hill. It has to do with workers' compensation for COVID. Essentially, it codifies the governor's previous executive order creating rebuttable presumptions for essential employees that if they do, if they do contract COVID, it's presumed to be through the course of employment. So obviously, the city was operating under that, given the executive orders, but that has been codified. It was an urgency statute, so that is law. And I believe that stays into effect through 2022. So it's just, it's a limited time, but, but just wanted to make sure to point that out. And then I think lastly, I will wrap up. I know that we're talking about federal, or excuse me, state, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention the, the ever uncertainty that's coming out of Washington DC on a phase four stimulus package. Obviously, the Democrats have passed the HEROES Act several months ago, the HEROES Act version 2.0 a couple of weeks ago. Speaker Pelosi has been in negotiations with Treasury Secretary Mnuchin, who's kind of been running point for the administration on these negotiations. Seems like, you know, certain days it feels like they're making progress, other days it doesn't. Then the governor, or excuse me, the president will tweet that it's off, and then it's on, and then it's too small and it's too big. So really, it's kind of anyone's, anyone's guess as to where that's going. There's a couple of things that I did want to specifically point out. HEROES Act version 2.0 did have 440 trillion, billion, excuse me, I'm trying to get my, my column is mixed up, $440 billion worth of funding for state and local governments. What's notable amongst that money is there would, the city would get a direct allocation from the federal government out of that pot. And then those funds could be used to backfill revenue loss. So, so a lot more flexibility than the funding that you did receive. You would not have the intermediary of the state, and then it would be significantly more magnitudes, magnitudes more. That was obviously based off version, you know, HEROES Act 2.0, so I wouldn't necessarily start spending those dollars yet, but that's a good conversation. Also, the last version, the last kind of negotiation point within the Trump administration, the $1.8 trillion package that they had been discussing with the Democrats, our understanding is that also did contain funding for state and local governments, which would be very positive, because previous to this, their proposals had not included funding for, for state and local government. So that seems like positive development. And then everyone has been talking about renewal of PPP. There was about 1.3 billion left in unused funds, so allowing those funds to be reused and then potentially, depending on the proposal, providing more funding for that program. And then generally speaking, if the way it's being negotiated, small, small businesses and certain businesses would get a second bite at the apple of PPP, so even if they received a previous PPP loan, they would be eligible to reapply. But obviously, we're going to need to see what kind of final, you know, what kind of final deal gets struck. At this point, I was, I was talking with Naruph a little earlier today. At this point, given the Senate's attention that's being paid this week to the Supreme Court confirmation, not going to happen this week. And then really, we're just two weeks out from the election. So I think that we may be looking at a lame ducks session situation, almost regardless of who wins the presidency. I think that if the Democrats, if Biden wins the presidency and the Democrats take the Senate, I think you'll see McConnell and President Trump really want to push to get a deal done. And if they don't, they'll have a lot more leverage to get something. So I think if, if Trump ends up winning and/or the Republicans maintain the Senate, I think that you'll see the Democrats being willing to give some, some leeway, because they know that they won't be able to get their preferred approach through. So ultimately, I think we're probably looking at probably another month before we see some, some action. I'd love to be proven wrong on that, but I think that's probably where we're headed. And with that, I will, I will stop talking if there's any questions.
Thank you. Excellent report, as always, Casey. Thank you. I just had one question. I mean, I was very thorough and I think touched on a lot of the things that really go to what's at stake for Lafayette with, with the recent session and also the federal level. The, I believe it's tomorrow is the date, if I'm not mistaken, that some of the cuts that were to take effect in the state budget, provided there was no form, that there was no further relief forthcoming from the federal government, those will take effect, I believe, beginning tomorrow, right? It was October 15th, the date?
Yeah.
And just, my, just very brief question there is, I know that that has to do with a lot of things like higher ed funding's part of that and other buckets like that. I don't believe, but tell me if this is not correct. I don't believe the impact on local government should be as substantial on other parts, as on other parts of the budget. But give me just a sense of what we might expect from this kind of, you know, state budget, like, you know, version 1.5, if you will, that we'll be, that we'll be looking at.
Yeah, I would say the, I'm going to air quote "good news", is that the way that the budget was ultimately approved, it went with the governor's kind of main budget structure. So the cuts were built in. So tomorrow, if, if the, if the federal funding had come by tomorrow, then essentially, then $13 billion of cuts would have been undone. So technically, nothing's going to happen tomorrow, because those cuts were already baked into the baseline. If those had come undone, you would have seen more funding, specifically, a lot of funding would have gone to education and then some Health and Human Services programs. And then just kind of, so, and then there would have been other, I don't want to say minor things, because, I mean, they aren't necessarily minor, but some of the pay cuts that were taken by, by state employees would have, would have come undone. So, so really, it would have undone cuts. So ultimately, you probably really shouldn't notice anything because of those, because of the way that the budget was done. As far as the, the primary elements of the local government's budget, you know, a lot of those are kind of outside the cuts. I mean, the SB 1 Transportation Funds, those are lower, but those were, that's just because of a result of fewer people driving and buying gas. You know, the CRF funding that the city got, nothing's going to happen to that. That, that was already included. So a, a lot of the sources of, you know, kind of the, the local feel would have been a reducing, a reduction of some of those cuts that like, sort of, maybe been felt by the school district or some people trying to access certain Health and Human Services. But really, the direct impact on the city should be, should be relatively negligible.
Thank you for that. That's helpful. It's almost like the exact inverse of the, trigger cuts were, what, 2012, right? So it's almost like the exact, near, near image of those, right?
Exactly, yeah. And, and the legislature did want to do, you know, the, the no cuts, and then they would go into effect. So ultimately, if that was, if that had So ultimately, if that was, if that had been done, then yeah, we would be having a very different conversation right now.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Casey. So with that, what I want to do is, I do want to talk, we can't, there's no action we can take, obviously. Yeah, I see. Go ahead, I think I know where you're going, but yeah.
We do have an attendee, and Greg Brown. And Greg, if you would like to speak on this matter, which is the update provided by Casey, can you please raise your hand, and I will let you in? I do not see the hand raised, so please proceed.
Great. Thank you, thank you, Narup, for checking. The, so bear with me here. So what I thought we would do next is, so I got a couple, a couple too many tabs open right now. Let's see, so the, thank you for the excellent recap. And then moving on to the agenda, so we've talked a little bit about prepping for the 2021 legislative session. We can maybe come back to that, although we did talk about that to some extent. But on the agenda, let me just say that, you know, the most recent agenda, we updated in June, so we are a few months into COVID. And I think you see already in the agenda, language around addressing a public health emergency. So so I think that's, that's here already. I think a couple of things, just to kind of indicate where I think we might be going when it comes back to council, is I think we might look again at, if there's anything stronger around wildfires, I think we've already included that in the agenda. That's a big, that's a big agenda item. Small business assistance. And then I would be, we'll see how well I know my fellow council members. I'd be surprised if there weren't something we might want to add in here to the agenda about any legislation that might, how can I put this, potentially like increase public confidence in the election system in California, just because that's been very much in the public eye of late. So these are just some of the things I think we would probably want to, I expect would come up when we come back to the council, to talk about revising the agenda for the upcoming year. There are probably other items I'm not thinking of.
That, thank you for that. And unfortunately, we, you can provide us with direction on these three items, Chair Bliss, but we can't provide the council with a recommendation.
Exactly.
There were two items that came out of the June 22 council meeting that the council members wanted this committee to look at. One was addressing telecommuting and broadband for all.
Yeah.
And the second was the use of force, police reform, systemic racism. I mean, that can be split up into two categories as well.
Right.
I did check a couple of ledge platforms from neighboring cities, and could not find those specific topics.
Yeah.
So Casey, if you have clients who have revised, I mean, this is a relatively, these are new topics. If you've revised platforms for other cities, I would love to know what the language was, so we can draw some inspiration from them. We can also draw from the Inclusion Equity and Inclusion Task Force mission statement.
Right, right. That's excellent. Yeah, I think, I think something that, so to pick up on exactly that point, I think one of the strengths of that task force, right, is that a big part of his mission is that saying, okay, we have this city level vision instead of priorities, and now we're going to look for other local partners to help implement those, which is a great model, right? Because building out assets that are in the community. It'd be great if for the agenda, let's, we can, we can almost direct, then think about how things would have to work in the opposite direction. In other words, is, are there policy levers at the state level that we should be in support of as a council that can advance the goals that are represented in the mission statement of the task force? So I think that connective tissue could be really powerful.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yes, I think if, since the committee hasn't had a chance to meet or act on those, that direction from council, I think that if there's any background information directly from that council direction from June, that could be provided when we bring this, when this comes back to council.
Yeah.
That would be, I think, useful, because.
Yeah, I can do a couple of things. I can provide that information. I can work with Casey to see, provide you with samples from cities, should they exist.
Yeah.
And then also draw from the Equity and Inclusion Task Force mission statement.
Right.
I think the issue of telecommute, commuting and broadband for all, I think one, we can split it, if I recall, the concern was, since most of us are telecommuting, and many, all our children are at virtual school, does everyone have access to these, these facilities? And should we make, should that be a priority for this council?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I mean, I can tell you that, that, you know, it really, yeah, I mean, I think that that's a great question. To tee it up that way, I think would be appropriate. Personally speaking, I think, I think that's something that goes so core to the issues of equity economically, among others, which are really, again, in a way tied back into some of the task force work as well. So, so, yeah, I think, and I think particularly, you know, as a city, that is, for people that work in any of the job centers, you know, San Jose, Oakland, San Francisco, you know, we're far enough away and constrained enough, you know, by potential challenges to transit that will be seen for the foreseeable future. I think there's certainly a labor market piece of that that could affect residents of Lafayette, I think, pretty directly. So I think something along those lines, both educationally and also from a sort of labor market standpoint, could be worth considering as well.
Definitely. We can bring some suggestions back to the council.
Okay. Great. Um, I just, because we're going to move on to what I think is the last item, which is, it might be brief, because we talked about this already a little bit process wise, about preparing for 2021. Before we move on from this item, I want to, again, just see if Mr. Brown has a desire to make any comment on this particular item before we move on. And if so, I'll just ask him to raise his hand in zoom. Okay, so let's, let's, I'm looking to both you, Narup, and Casey as well. Anything else we need to discuss in terms of our roadmap for prepping for the 2021 session, and what we might want to accomplish in the last few meetings of this, of this particular council?
Casey is going to be working with department heads, and to go over the ledge platform, the ledge agenda, to make sure that it still reflects, it reflects what the council has asked us to include, and if they have any suggestions, we will bring those forth to the council as well.
Right.
Casey, do you want to talk about getting ready for the next set of bills, and any trips to Sacramento?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, well, I didn't mention earlier, the legislative calendar isn't out yet, but typically, we would expect in the first year of a legislative session for the bill introduction deadline to be somewhere around the last Friday in February. So, so once the legislature returns, we'll have two months, and then pretty much like everyone, everywhere, they will wait until the last possible minute, until they're up against the deadline to really introduce the bulk of those bills. So, so really, I think from a, you know, kind of, we'll see, you know, ones and twos, bills trickle in. I think when the legislature first returns in January, we'll really be seeing, my guess would be COVID legislation, maybe wildfire legislation, but really, things that need to be done urgently. So that's why it would be, it would be great to have a ledge platform in place for those items, but if not, you know, understandable, the bulk of legislation we're going to be looking at in February, I think. You know, I think as far as trips go, I would love to give you, get a trip up here. That will obviously depend upon what, what up here looks like. You know, I'm still, I'm still holding out hope that the 2021 calendar year is going to return a little bit more to normal. I don't really see a compelling reason, from a state capital perspective, given the election coming up and then going into the holidays, I don't think we're going to see a lot of, you know, members or staff around the, around the Capitol. However, I just feel like January is going to be, everyone's going to say like, okay, that was, we lost that year, but now let's try to go back to normal as much as possible. So assuming that things are more back to normal, I think it would be great to get, you know, the city back up here again. By, I would say by, hopefully by February, maybe the end of February, we'll start, well, obviously, we'll start seeing some bills introduced. We should have a good idea of, you know, any committee, committee membership changes, whether it's in chairs or committee members, that we may want to, you know, kind of either reintroduce the city, you know, to those members, or kind of reinforce some of our points, particularly, I'm thinking of members of the local government committee, the Governance and Finance Committee, you know, where a lot of our items roll through. Housing committees, for example, Assembly Member Chu, Senator Weiner, I don't expect those committee chairmanships to change, but, you know, if they do, that will definitely be something we want to, that we want to be aggressive about. I think it potentially could be more likely in the Senate than in the Assembly, but that's just more my take on just some internal politics, more than anything else. So I think by kind of the, you know, maybe the latter half of February, we should have an idea of all of those things settling out. And then similarly, you know, I thought we started really great last year, again, pre-COVID, what feels like a million years ago, meeting with Glazer and RBK, and getting, you know, some, some budget requests in, I mean, when it still looked like the state was going to have some money. I think it'll be important to kind of, after we get that January budget out, and we kind of see where the state budget's going to shake out, what some city needs might be. Maybe we won't go up and talk about specific direct earmarks for the city, but maybe we want to incorporate some things on, on where we would like to see some funding go to specific programs that may be helpful. I mean, like I said, like, I don't know if undergrounding of, you know, utility lines may be something that would be helpful, but I'm thinking, you know, maybe we could start working with, you know, Senator Glazer and Assembly Member Barrett Cahan on, if not direct funding for the city, like maybe things that they could be advocating for within the state budget that could lead to the city getting money down the road. So I think that generally speaking, you know, I like the month of February, it's still relatively quiet, we still have a lot of, a few bills that have been introduced, and a lot of the politics have shaken out. So, yeah, assuming that things are relatively back to normal, I would, I would highly encourage that, and would be happy to work with, with Narup and council to facilitate that, and make sure we can be prepped and ready to go.
Thank you, Casey. Appreciate that.
I had a question for you, Chair Bliss. You talked about the timing of taking this back to the council for a discussion.
Yeah.
Given the upcoming elections and the impacts on the state budget. So we have a choice of taking it to the next meeting, where we're really going to be, we may not have time to do that, if we're going to be talking to the department heads first to see, and I'm talking about the ledge platform.
Mm-hmm.
So it'll like, we will probably bring a revised platform back in November.
Sure.
Do you see a challenge in that, you and Casey?
I mean, I'll, I'll look for Casey to weigh in as well, but no, I don't think that timing is problematic. That would mean potentially, we would bring it back, that first meeting in November of council, which would be the ninth, I think, if my math is right. So it'd be two day, you know, six days after.
Evictions.
The election, and who knows, right? Who knows, right?
Yeah.
Well, let's assume, let's assume we, we have some indication by that Monday of where things have landed. I think that timing would be great. I think, I want to underscore in this, I'm speaking just personally, because I, you know, we don't, we can't voice this as a committee officially. I think taking the time to get input from the department heads is a great idea, and I love having that level of input, and so creating time for that, I think is really important. So I think, and I think Narup may have dropped off, because she's frozen, but, but I would just say that, and I can, I'll connect with Narup as well on this, but I think if it works for you, Casey, I think planning to have that discussion that Monday after Election Day could be that sweet spot between having some sense of how the election shook out, but still having this council constituted, and it would be before that brief mini-session when the ledge comes back into the building remotely for a couple of days.
Yeah, no, I think that would, I think that would be good, you know, from my standpoint. I would also note that it would probably give the council, if they, if you wanted to, to consider any implications from potentially Prop 15 or Prop 21.
Yeah.
That may want to be factored into the platform, particularly on 21 as regards to rent control. I can definitely see the legislature wanting to do some implementation type bills next year. I think Prop 15, if that passes, it's still going to be a little bit, and they'd probably just be tankering, but particularly 21. But, yeah, it would, we would know, maybe we'll know, the outcome by then of those.
That's perfect. So I think then, what I'll do is, I will, if she doesn't join back before we wrap here, Casey, I'll just share with Narup that we pretty much, in the last couple minutes affirmed what we were headed toward, which was shooting for November 9th, to have this come back to council. So with that, I think we're wrapped here. Casey, again, thank you for the great work and for being our able guide through this crazy year and beyond, and I will, we'll connect before now on the 9th, I'm sure, but I think we're wrapped, and have a great evening, and I will, we'll talk soon. Thanks, everybody.
Sounds good. Thank you.